This is the Board of Trustees' regular meeting, number 2023-04. It is February 28th, 2023. It is 9:00 a.m., and we are here in the Village Hall Auditorium. Roll call, please.
Mayor Boarder.
Present.
Trustee Sack.
Here.
Trustee Pembroke.
Here.
Trustee Mallow.
Here.
Trustee Oliniechek.
Here.
Trustee Desmond.
Here.
And could we have a motion to allow trustee Stalker to participate by phone?
So moved.
Roll call.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechek.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance of veterans.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, number three on the agenda is a presentation by CDM Smith. How you doing?
Good.
Good.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Board. Thank you for having me out today to present on the status of the Oaklawn Water Transformation Main Project. My name's Matt Rambold. I'm from the engineering firm CDM Smith, and we're providing construction oversights during the project.
Well, that looks, everything looks good there.
There we go. Okay, and if we move to the next slide. This is just an overview of the project. If you remember, I was here back in the fall, and we were talking about work in the Central Avenue-Southwest Highway intersection. And I'm happy to report that that water main was successfully installed by January of this year. There are two other phases of the project remaining. The next work will be completed at the Cicero Highway, Cicero Avenue-Southwest Highway intersection, with work at the 95th Street-Southwest Highway intersection to follow this summer. So if we go to the next slide, we'll zoom in here to the Cicero Avenue-Southwest Highway intersection. The main purpose of this is to inform Oaklawn and the residents of some upcoming changes to traffic control. So here just shows on the southern part of the roadway is where we'll be setting up two work zones, with traffic being moved to the north side of the street along Southwest Highway. If we go to the next slide, we'll zoom into the west side of Cicero. Again, you see the work zone being set up on the south side of Southwest Highway, with one lane of traffic in each direction contained to the north side. We will keep the left turn and right turn lanes open to get from Southwest Highway to Cicero Avenue. But we did want to report that, just for safety concerns, we are looking to close the 49th Avenue intersection. We do believe residents have another egress into and out of the neighborhood through the Columbus Avenue. We're also asking for no left turns to and from Southwest Highway, again, for safety, just through this construction area. If we go to the next slide, we'll look at the east side. Again, same sort of configuration with the work zone on the south side, one lane of traffic in each direction on the north side, again, keeping the left turn lane open to Cicero Avenue. From time to time, we'll have to, we may have to stop traffic along Southwest Highway just to move equipment and materials in and out of the work zone. We'll have flaggers up there to direct traffic. We'll keep crosswalks open, and we'll be posting business open signs through the work area. And so, work through the Southwest Highway portion should be ongoing between March and June. But we'll also have to cross Cicero Avenue, and we're proposing to do that in four stages. We expect this work to start sometime in mid-April. Each of these stages should be nine to 10 days in duration. We do allow the contractor to work 24/7. For Central Avenue, he did not need to work that many later days. We'll keep an eye on this as we approach working Cicero. All that traffic control in Southwest Highway will remain the same. Traffic control along Cicero will extend between 92nd and 95th Street. We'll have, we'll maintain two lanes of traffic in each direction, and we'll keep the left turn lane open to Southwest Highway. For a couple of the stages, we do have a couple of turning restrictions, but we will post detours when those are in place, and we will make sure the crosswalks remain open. And if we go one more slide, just some coordination items. We are coordinating these lane closures with the Oaklawn Police and Fire Departments, also with the commercial and residential property owners in and around the area. If we do have to close some driveways, we'll sort of post notices to the residents that are impacted. We'll be in coordination with Oaklawn to avoid any trash pickup disruptions. There might be some planned shutdowns to the, some temporary shutdowns to the water distribution system just to allow construction to progress. These will be temporary on the order of a couple of hours, and we'll be in coordination with Oaklawn, the residents, if anybody would be impacted by those. And somebody from CDM Smith will be on-site during construction during the duration of the project, should anybody from the community have any questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to compliment you guys on the job that was done guiding the project on Central and Southwest Highway. I know it was difficult, and with the scope of the project and the amount of work that was done, it was done with relatively few concerns from the residents. I will tell you that communication is always good. If you can get out in front of communicating with the residents of what's going to happen, especially in the impacted area, would be greatly appreciated. And one thing I will tell you is when you close down the turning, and there was no left turn off of Southwest Highway, not everybody adhered to that, and I will tell you, there were a lot of deep personal conversations at that time with some of the violators. So I would only ask if you could mark that off. Is there any electronic signs that we could put? Any type of digital signs that we could put for that? Because that seems to have been the biggest issue, especially during rush hour traffic. I don't know from a staff if there's anything we could do during those heavy traffic periods of making sure that people are adhering to when there are no left turns, that the people are held accountable for.
Sure. So electronic signs or other sign postings? We could definitely work with the contractor for that. We do have a little bit more space at Cicero compared to Central Avenue. So that left turn at the major intersection, for all phases except we have one stage where we have a shutdown from Southwest to Cicero. But for all the other stages, those left turns will remain open to hopefully alleviate the issues that we saw at Central. But for that stage, I think getting the electronic sign up before that, just, you know, giving a heads up that there is no left turn during that, we can do that.
And then the only other thing I would ask we could do. I know that traffic bleed is inevitable. We are going to see people cutting down side streets. I know that that is something that's a part of this, but I know that when we first kicked off that Central and Southwest Highway, we saw more traffic. I don't know what staff did to regulate that or to curtail it, but it seemed to, in the second part of it, help out. All I ask is that we start taking a look at between 91st and basically the railroad tracks, and between pretty much 51st going all the way to that, going towards a hospital, that we have a plan to redirect traffic and that there are people in those neighborhoods. If somebody has to use the roads, that's fine, but obey the traffic signals and obey the speeds.
Sure thing.
Thank you, trustee. Any other question? I have one. This is a three-year project, as I recall. Is this the final phase in Oaklawn?
This is, we have work at Cicero this spring and work at 95th in the summer, and that will be the end of work in Oaklawn.
Okay.
The rest of it will be towards the south.
Yeah, a lot of people have been in convenience over three years, but this is a major project, bringing water out to all our neighbors to the south. Major water line, takes a lot of work to get that done. So I'm glad to hear this is the final year.
Mayor, I did have one more thing.
Yes.
As far as Central, did it finish early? Is there a plan? Could it finish early? I mean, the months I believe I saw were April to June for this project.
For this stage. So Central did finish about the timeline we expected.
Okay.
Contractor is feeling maybe a little bit more bullish. We had supply issues on Central, just trying to, especially with the concrete restoration of the roadway. And, you know, as you work across Cicero, you have to restore each phase as you go through. So if we can see improved supply on that side, we may be able to.
I just see the left turn lane for both of those is going to be much larger than what trustee Oliniechek spoke about in regard to Central. There's more people turning left to either go westbound or north, or northbound or southbound on Cicero Avenue from either of those sides.
And, yeah, just to reiterate, we are keeping that left turn lane. So at Central, we didn't have the space to keep a left turn lane.
Oh, so there is.
So we are able to maintain it except for one of the, say, six stages as we go across Cicero.
Because I saw new lights up there currently.
Correct.
Lights up. The other ones will shut down in the.
Yes, they had this.
It was very specific to, you couldn't turn left on red. So is that's going to still be the way that it will be current?
You can't turn left on?
You can't turn left unless there's an arrow. Like, it gives you an arrow, and then once it turns red, there's no more left. There's no waiting in the middle of the intersection turn. That was the new change that happened to that area.
Yes, I think that was an IDOT requirement that that signal should have changed that way.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you. Excellent presentation. Made it simple and easy to understand. Thank you, sir. All right, presentation by Nycor. It's a representative from Nycor here.
Hi, how are you?
I'm well, how are you guys?
Good, good.
All right, good morning, everybody. I'm Darlene Rucker. I'm a program manager for Nycor Gas. I'm here today to talk about our sewer inspection program, also known as Crossport Program. I bought with me our contractor, Vector Services. They're going to walk us through their processes, a little bit about their company, and a little bit about the project, and then I'll be here to answer any questions for Nycor, so.
How you guys doing?
Good.
So kind of looking at it, we're going to be doing some sewer cam inspections on 87th Street and 51st, if you can go to the next slide. So kind of a little bit about who we are. We are a diverse company. We're across kind of about 13 states. Kind of want to introduce you guys to us with here in Oaklawn. So we got four different visions. The one division that'll be working in your guys' area will be our sewer camera division. We work hand-in-hand with Nycor across all the Chicagoland area. We have a little bit in the city as well. Just kind of giving you guys an idea. Give me the next slide. Kind of give you that area. Darlene, obviously the Nycor manager. I am Mark Trub, and I am the operations manager. I did bring with me my superintendent, Alex. And then Dan is our field general foreman, kind of out there and about. And you can kind of see our contacts. Give me the next slide. Kind of what we're doing and who we are. So essentially, we're going to come out here. We are going to camera all the mainline sewers, all the lateral sewers for sanitary, just to make sure when they installed the gas previously, they weren't hit. So Crossport Programs are kind of known throughout the country, and this is kind of one of them. This is what we call a legacy program. It's more dated, a little bit older, just making sure that, you know, it's more of a high-risk area. Doing that, we're going to be out in the middle of the manholes. You kind of see that setup in the picture to the right. That's a very basic setup. That's what you'll see when we're inspecting the mains. In conjunction with that, we will be running what we call a lateral launch system up toward everybody's house. And kind of being in their yard, just making sure that, hey, we're in there. We're making sure that nothing's damaged and making sure everything's okay. In the event some reason you can't get all the way up to somebody's house, or in the event that there might be a blockage, ball, anything like that, we are going to have to use what we call a sewer push camera. Any kind of plumbing, you've kind of seen them, it's just a little, about yay-high. Go in there, push or clean out, make sure that's all good. And then, in the event that we do that, we are going to coordinate with the homeowners. See us kind of out there. Attached to that is our Nycor badge. Obviously, that's my lovely photo there. And we all do have business cards on us, and every single one of my foremen do carry that business card. Pretty much do a full inspection. Our goal is to get up to every single house and do a full inspection to make sure nothing was damaged. Can you give me the next slide? Kind of what a crossbar is. And I know there's a lot of terminology here, but crossbars is anywhere we're intersecting with gas and sewer. So you can kind of see on the pictures on the right. My camera's actually sitting there. You can kind of see where the gases intersect. That's what we're looking for. The big concern is that's potentially dangerous to the homeowner, obviously with their property. But we don't want to get gas inside anybody's house, and there's a potential with that leak that's going to go point least resistance, and that's going to go straight to the house. In the event that we find an impingement, or in the event that we actually can't clear it, we're actually going to come out there. We're either going to dig it up just to make sure it wasn't damaged, or we're going to fix it. And you can kind of see what our standard procedure fixing it there. We're going to have a certified plumber out to fix it. We're going to coordinate with the homeowner. In the event we do find something like this, Nycor is actually going to come out, gas test it, just to make sure it's a non-emergency situation. If it's not emergency, we're going to fix it as soon as the homeowner lets us. Can you give me the next slide? Kind of project scope timeline. Obviously, this is on 87th and 51st Ave, and we got to overview the project next slide. This gas main was installed in 1953, but a lot of the services were installed in the 90s and early 2000s. We're looking about 410 addresses. Letters will be mailed to every single address, and that is actually a copy of the letter to write. On that letter, it gives them a brief description. It also gives contact information for Alex, and it gives it also for Darlene here. So if they want to talk to anybody, anything like that, we're looking, that sewer truck that you guys saw on the previous slide, we're probably looking at one or two crews on that. And hopefully, we're starting here beginning of March, about end of May on the timeline. Only way we usually go beyond that timeline if some reason we're trying to repair something or verify something. Obviously, working with the homeowners, sometimes that might stretch out. If you can give me the next slide. Kind of looking at it, this is kind of our project scope. As you kind of see, anything that's got the blue line on it, we're going to come out there, those are the addresses affected. We're going to come out there, scope the main line and then scope the laterals as well. And then, if you can give me the next photo. That's also part of the project kind of down as well. Kind of looking at it, we do offer all of our videos for the city as well, because I know a lot of the cities run their own programs. You guys are more welcome to have that when we are done with the project, and we can hand-deliver that, whether it's electronically or via like a flash drive. And that information is all available to you guys as well. Next slide. And it's pretty much an open floor, questions, anything from me or Nycor.
Mayor?
Thank you, yes.
All right. Darlene, this is just a after-action, just for abundance of safety, correct? Just to make sure that the work you did, there's not going to be any intersecting lines or any type of opportunity for gas to get in the house, correct?
Correct, yes.
With that being said, we see the scammers that have come out wearing safety vests, coming to residents' homes, and we have a lot of seniors there. What advice would you give to our residents about if somebody approaches you? What should they be looking?
Yep, so they should be looking for the contractor, Vector Services. They'll have a badge. They all should say either Nycor or maybe AGL if they're a little bit older. And then, if they have any doubts or concerns, to call the number on the letter, my number, Darlene Rucker, and I can verify if that is back to contractor out there.
All right, and one other thing I'd add is if somebody is pressuring you as a resident, saying, "I need to get in, I need to get in, it's an emergency," at that point, do not let them in your house. Call 911 and get our police involved in it right away. We do not want people being pressured to come into your house. Would there be any reason for Nycor or the contractor, Vector, to have to get into a resident's house?
If they're smelling gas. I would say if they were the ones to call and say that they're smelling gas.
No, no, I'm saying if a contractor comes to the door
Oh.
and says, "I need immediate access to your house." That should be a red flag to any, correct?
Um, yeah, they'll usually make appointments, correct?
Yeah, so what we'll do is we'll make an appointment. Do try to get in the homeowner's house if they do not have what we call an outside access. So if they don't have an outside access, we will come in there. Obviously, if you're available right now, we will come in there right now. In the event that you want to make an appointment, make an appointment. We'll come back at a later time. None of my employees should ever be pressuring.
No pressure.
Right, so that should be a red sign. And what I'm just saying, and I'm asking residents, and I hope the press gets this, if somebody is pressuring you to get into your house, call 911. Don't even waste your time. Call 911 right away. Our police, correct, police chief, would be more than happy to come out and investigate. But do not let people into your house, especially with construction work that's being done, unless it is a village represented employee or somebody that's credible from Nycor. If there's any doubt, again, any doubt would mean you're concerned, call 911. I'd rather have you call 911 than have somebody going through your house.
Yep, that's a great point.
And then one other question for Darlene. On the scope of the Nycor project, where is this at with the total project that's being done in the Village of Oaklawn?
What do you mean?
Well, there's still work being done on the east side of Central between 87th and 91st.
Is that a gas main replacement?
Yes.
Yeah, I can't speak to that timeline. I can only speak to the sewer inspection.
Okay, can we get someone from Nycor for our next meeting just to get an update of all the projects that are going on with Nycor? Because I know that there's been a lot of work done over the fall and winter, and there are some concerns from residents when their sidewalks are going to be replaced, some of the work that was done that needed to be backfilled after the. If we can get another presentation from Nycor to tell us what the update is and what the master scope for the Village of Oaklawn would be on their projects, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I can get you a contact for that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mayor, I have a question.
Sure.
Is the 87th and 51st just the project name? Or is that where the truck will stage? You referenced the truck being staged. Will that truck be all over that area?
Yes.
But not just 87th and 51st?
Yep.
Okay, that's just sort of the project?
Yep.
Okay.
And I have one question, too. You say that you're going to scope the property owner's line into their home. How deep is that scope going to go? Just to where Nycor ran a line or all the way into the house?
It's going to stop right at their border wall, so.
So if they have roots, other problems with their sewer line, this is not going to tell them that, just if Nycor busted their line?
Pretty much, but we do offer all homeowners more welcome to, one, watch the video. We go out quite a bit to homeowners. But we see some kind of roots, they're going to know. We were pretty open with that.
Okay.
Call it more of a free inspection than anything.
Great, that's good news. Yes?
Bill, is there anything that concerns the village regarding this? Is there a reason that they're only doing 87th? Or what's the reason that this is being done right now?
Paul, so it's a good program. What they're trying to do is alleviate or make sure that there was no pipes bored through any lateral service typically, or even a village main. They've done this work in the past in town. And what we're trying to do is bring this information to the board and to the residents ahead of time so everybody can get a handle of it, and so everybody's aware of who will be out there and what work will be being done. I think it's a good program. It's a good resource, something that Nycor has been doing, and I believe will continue to do, correct, Darlene? It's something that you guys always follow back on.
Yep, this is a part of our legacy program. So the scopes or the areas, they usually come from our DEMP program. They kind of assess risk areas, and then they'll give us the area in which we move into, and this was one of the areas that came up.
And I think if I could speak, because I had the same concern, trustee Mallow, this area, it's not a test area. You actually have concerns based on work that was done, right? We're not going to do this all over.
No, so, yeah, it's picked based off of, like I said, our risk assessment model. So that's usually how project scopes get picked.
Good. Any other questions? Thank you for your presentation. Thank you. All right, public comments. Madam Clerk, any public comments today?
There were none.
Okay, thanks. We'll move on to a conflict of interest disclosure. Any trustee have any issues with anything on this agenda today? Hearing none. Approval of closed meeting minutes 2023-01, dated January 10th, 2023. Motion, please. Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechek.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Motion approved. Approval of regular meeting minutes 2023-03, dated February 14th, 2023. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechek.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Motion approved. New business by village trustees. District One, trustee Desmond?
I have no new business, mayor.
Thank you. District Two, trustee Oliniechek?
Yeah, I just want to compliment this board once again for all the money that we're putting in infrastructure to be out in front of issues that we see in other municipalities that haven't put that money into. We hear about Nycor, they have to do that. We hear about the master water project with the mayor. That's been something we've been working on for over 17 years, and it's coming quickly to, just from a project to being a complete project, which is, I mean, it takes a lot of time to get the right things done. But that doesn't undersell all of the infrastructure projects that our Public Works Department's been doing with the citer lining of our sewer systems, with the updating of water meters. So I think it's, a lot of times, people forget what's underground, and they don't get to see all the infrastructure that we're investing in. It's an amazing story when you look at, when you hear things have been in the ground since 1951 or 1949, and we're updating these types of things. So I just want to commend our Public Works Department for having that foresight back 15, 20 years ago of saying, "If you really want to solve a problem, here's the problem. We got the water pumping station complete. Now we just have to finish those lines." So I think that that's great. And again, when you take a look at the flood control and mitigation, which we're sure we're going to hear about in the future, about some of the good meetings, there's a lot of good work being done by our staff. Appreciate everything. That concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee. District Three, trustee Mallow.
Thanks, mayor. I just wanted to update on the artenement commission process of going through the submissions for our bans for our schedule for the calendar of 2023, as well as the Fall Fest. So we have received numerous, way more than before, ban submissions. So they are going through them now. We should have a completed schedule for this board to review by next month.
Thank you, trustee. Those concerts on the green are really popular. They're growing. We'll have to make the green better if they keep growing like, bigger.
Bigger.
They keep growing. Thank you, trustee. District Four, trustee Pembroke.
No new business, mayor.
Trustee Five, trustee Stalker.
Nothing this time, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Six?
No new business.
No new business.
Oh, thank you, trustee. All right, move on to village managers' report.
Nothing this morning.
Thank you. Consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine and brought forward at the direction of the board of trustees, village manager or village committees and will be enacted with one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. A, request the approval of a temporary parking lot tent for a garden center at the Jewel Food Stores, 8801 South Rilgen from March through June 2023. B, resolution 23-04-04, Fourth of July Parade. C, resolution 23-04-05, a resolution appointing Mike Volnik to the Appeals and Review Board of the Village. D, resolution 23-04-06, a resolution approving a proposal from C.M. Lovian Associates for an engineering, construction, bidding and design services for the 2023 sewer rehabilitation program. E, resolution 23-04-07, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a temporary construction easement agreement with the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago. F, resolution 23-04-08, a resolution authorizing the village manager to engage Baker Tilly to conduct an audit of the Village of Oaklawn's financial statements and related notes of the year of 2022. G, resolution 23-04-09, a resolution waiving the competitive bidding requirements and approving a proposal from Wonderlic and Malek for certain water pumping station computer and service upgrades. H, resolution 23-04-10, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the Oaklawn Hometown School District 123 and the Oaklawn High School District 229 relative to property tax appeal board interventions. Motion, please.
Motion approved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the vote.
Trustee Sack?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Olenicek?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Motion passes. Twelve, ordinance 23-04-20, an ordinance granting an appeal of an advisor, of an adverse decision and approving a special use permit for a second dwelling unit in an R1 single-family zone district at 4901 Oak Center Drive, Oaklawn, Illinois. Motion?
Motion oppose.
A motion to oppose. Is there a second?
Second.
A second. Roll call on the motion to oppose.
Trustee Sack?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Olenicek?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Thank you. Village clerks' report.
Disbursement Resolution Number 2023-04 dated February 28th, 2023 in the amount of $1,748,474.99.
Motion to pay the bills?
Motion to pay the bills.
A second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Sack?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Olenicek?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Motion passes. Village presidents' report. I have nothing to report this month. So number 15 is an executive session, 2023-03 for the purpose of discussing closed meeting minutes of 2023-02 dated February 14th, 2023 and two pending litigation. Motion, please.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Sack?
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke?
Yes.
Trustee Mallow?
Yes.
Trustee Olenicek?
Yes.
Trustee Stalker?
Yes.
Trustee Desmond?
Yes.
Motion passes. That ends our public meeting. Thank you for coming out, entering the executive session.